Good evening and welcome to the January tenth, twenty twenty-three regular session meeting of City Council. If you are with us tonight and would like to address council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate item I for matters germane to City Council if the item you wish to speak to is not on the agenda. As to our light system, on our podium, we have a light system. After stating your name and address, the green light will appear. After two minutes, the yellow light will appear, and after three minutes, the red light will appear, and we ask that you promptly take your seat at that time. The city code identifies the procedure for citizen participation regarding items on tonight's council agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to the business of the council. Matters that are germane to the business of the council means matters that the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. This does not include announcements that are personal to you, your business, your organization, including campaign information. Copies of the city ordinance regarding citizen participation can be found at the desk in the lobby. If you intend to address council this evening, please pick up and review a copy of that ordinance. At this time, we ask that you please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Apostle Doctor Christopher Spels with Harvest Church will provide an invocation to the council. Afterwards, Vice Mayor Curtis Bethany will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. It is the practice of the council members to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
Let us pray. Father and our Father, we come boldly before you tonight, thanking you for another year that you brought our city into victory. We thank you for the newness and the grace and the mercy that you've given us. We thank you as we intercede for the city of Newport News that you are opening the eyes of our understanding, that we may be able to honor you in all that we do and please you. We pray tonight that as we go forth in this wonderful year, that your thoughts are our thoughts and your ways are our ways. And as we continue to be great citizens, we thank you for preserving our city. We thank you that this year, twenty twenty-three, will be a year of restoration, a year of wholeness for our communities. We pray for a spiritual awakening in the hearts of the citizens of Newport News. We pray, God, that you would ignite excellence and godly passion towards one another. Give us strategies that will cancel division in the works of the enemy. In the name of our Lord, we bind spirits that have held this city captive for years, and we believe for breakthrough this year. We bind spirits of violence and murder, suicide, self-destruction, sabotage, domestic violence, abuse, anger, rage. We bind spirits of division. And tonight, we thank you for healing. And tonight, on our first City Council meeting of twenty twenty-three, we thank you for our new mayor. We thank you for our new council men and councilwomen. We pray that you would strengthen them. We pray that you would give them wisdom, knowledge, and understanding, as they're not just politicians, but they're leaders, agents of change. We speak blessings over every household in our city. We winter every assignment of the enemy null and void. We pray tonight for our city leaders. We pray for our policemen, for our police chief, for our firefighters. We pray for our city officials, the employees. We pray for every neighborhood, every borough, every family. We pray for our educators and for the students. We pray for the safety of our students even in school. We pray against gang violence. We pray against gun violence. And we declare that the kingdoms of our God will become the kingdoms of this city. Father, send forth an outpouring of your spirit over this city, that we may execute and exist one and another in wisdom, in truth, in honor, and in love, that you may endow us with peace and righteousness and holiness, and your word is the statue in which we uphold. Father, we thank you that your word will not return void tonight, but it will accomplish everything it is sent out to perform in the city of Newport News, Virginia, as we carefully honor every name that they call their God, and we respect that. And tonight, I pray in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
If you will join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Please be seated. Public hearings. Item E1 is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sale or condemnation parcels of property located at six one four twentieth street, seven two six sixteenth street, eighteen oh four Ivy Avenue, nineteen oh eight Ivy Avenue, and nineteen eleven Ivy Avenue for the undergrounding of overhead utilities along Ivy Avenue from twelfth Street to twentieth street. The city is acquiring five easements to underground overhead power utilities and participation of the Choice Network Initiative Ivy Avenue Road Reconstruction Project. The project is located along Ivy Avenue between twelfth Street and twentieth street. Appraisals have been completed for each location totaling approximately eight thousand six hundred and twenty-six dollars. The city manager recommends approval. Are there any speakers? No speakers at this time. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second? It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Council Malong.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Consent and agenda. Item F contains the following items: Page thirteen, minutes of the special meeting of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two; Page eighteen, minutes of the work session of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two; Page fifty-four, minutes of the regular meeting of December thirteenth, twenty twenty-two. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda, items F1 through F3, all inclusive?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Council Malong.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Next on our agenda, other City Council actions. Page ninety-two, item G1, matter manager.
Yes, the first item is a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing an encroachment upon the twenty-ninth Street right-of-way and authorizing the city manager to execute an encroachment agreement between the city of Newport News, Virginia, and three-one-one thirty-third Street LLC, and I recommend approval.
Are there any speakers?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Please approach the stadium. And just give us your name and your address.
Tyler Rosé, two-two-two Central Park Avenue, Virginia Beach, Virginia, two-three-four-six-two. Here on behalf of the property owner, here for any questions that the council may have this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilman Harris. Oh, never mind. Sorry. Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page one oh five, item G2, matter manager.
Yes, this is a companion item to the last one. It's a request to adopt an ordinance authorizing an encroachment upon the thirty-third Street and Huntington Avenue right-of-way and authorizing the city manager to execute an encroachment agreement between the city of Newport News, Virginia, and three-one-one thirty-third Street LLC, and I recommend approval.
Okay. I know it's the same speaker, only for questions. Okay? Is there a motion to adopt the ordinance?
So moved.
Is there a... Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
Page one eighteen, item G3, matter manager.
Yes, this is a request to approve a resolution authorizing and directing the city manager to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the purchase of property located at four-two-nine Thorn Cliff Drive, and I recommend approval. And one item I meant wasn't in here. The assessed value of the property is three-point-three-six million.
Excuse me, I didn't hear.
Pardon me?
Keep... repeat them.
Three-point-three-six million.
Three-point-two. Are there any speakers? No speakers at this time. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Move it up.
Is there a second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Ely.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Councilwoman Woodbury.
Four.
Motion carried, seven zero.
There are no appropriations submitted for item H. We will now move forward to item I. Citizen comments. Item I, citizen comments on matters germane to the business of City Council. I will call each name in the order that it appears in front of me. Rena Crabbill?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Rena Crabbill, four-twenty-two Eastwood Drive. Good evening, Newport News City Council members, mayor, city manager, and others here in service of our city. I want to say thank you to the retiring council members that I've worked with in the past, and welcome and congratulations to the new members. In Newport News, there are a lot of priorities, and the very recent tragic events highlight some of these in a very pointed way. I do not wish to make light of these by my emphasis on something else tonight. We all want to feel safe in our homes, in our schools, and in our public places. Addressing these challenges will surely test us all, but I'm glad to know there are still heroes among us. For those of you that haven't been here for the bulk of the last six years, I would like to bring you up to date on the action of citizens with regard to our beautiful Riverview Farm Park. For at least two years, and probably more, a large contingent of Newport News citizens showed up at City Council meetings to ensure that all of the Riverview Farm Park would remain park and not some other designation or mixed use. Adrian Whitcomb, our inspiration, came to every City Council meeting except one, joined at most of them by other members of the community. At most of these meetings, there were multiple members of the group speaking from their point of view why the property should be saved in its entirety as promised to the people of Newport News. In addition, students of Minchfield High School spoke to City Council en masse on this issue, seventy-five of them, in fact, who wrote you letters. Many of these letters were read in City Council. I have given a package to the city clerk for your perusal. In January of twenty eighteen, Dale Good put together a factual and insightful treatise that noted how keeping the city farm acreage as a park aligned perfectly with the Newport News comprehensive plan adopted that same year. I have given a copy of that also to the city clerk. The plan itself emphasizes the point that our city, even with the massive Newport News City Park to our north, is woefully deficient in green space, having only half of the recommended amount of green space for a healthy community. We did petitions, excuse me, petitions in various places around Newport News, and while doing that, we found that people came as far away as Richmond and Norfolk to come to, in their words, "the best park around." Prior to all this activity, citizens have been advancing ideas for our parks since nineteen ninety-one. Appropriate land usages that would benefit all city citizens regardless of economic status. That is thirty years of citizen involvement with the park. This is an issue that unifies our citizens. I recognize and appreciate the fresh energy to build on the efforts of the past. Let's use that energy to build that bridge to the citizens who have been waiting for years for their usage of the city farm area of the Riverview Farm Park. Let's create the Citizens Advisory Panel, long-promised, of citizens who care about green space, quality of life, and the enjoyment of nature, to shape our beautiful park. And I would like to say, please remember our neighbors who are less fortunate than we are. Please give to the food bank when you can.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up is Patrick Wright.
My name is, excuse me, my name is Patrick Wright. I live at nine-four-two Shore Drive, Newport News, Virginia. Mayor Jones and City Council members, since this is the first City Council meeting of two thousand twenty-three, I would like to wish you and all our fellow citizens a happy, healthy, and safe New Year. I would especially like to welcome our new mayor and three new City Council members. It is worth noting that all four of these new council members are under the age of forty. At a relatively young age, they felt the call to public service in our city. I hope that they will, this will inspire fellow citizens of all ages to feel the call to work with all in our city to make Newport News the best it can be. I am reminded by a verse from Proverbs which says, "The glory of the young is their strength; the gray hair of experience is the splendor of the old." It is my hope that we will see many years of public service from these new members of City Council. I am pleased to see citizens here with whom I have worked on various projects over the years. We have come together at times for various causes, and even when our goals have been met, we keep an eye out to ensure commitments are made and commitments are kept. I would encourage all members of the City Council to be open and transparent in their deliberations and actions and heedful of the expressed desires of the citizenry. An unusual, though not uncommon, tragic event has once again brought focus to something without which all other goals cannot be achieved, and that is public safety. We cannot have the city we want if our citizens are not safe in their homes, neighborhoods, schools, places of work, houses of worship, and public gatherings. This situation is not unique to Newport News. All cities of similar size share this problem, but this is our city's and ours to solve. I remain an optimist and look forward to seeing our City Council, the city government, and our fellow citizens working together to achieve great things and to make Newport News the shining city on the James. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Radek Barnes?
Good evening, returning council people. Congratulations, new council people. I think I know most of y'all. I really want to congratulate Mayor Jones. Met him, I think maybe the first time at Lincoln Park, maybe. But I see him all the time in the community, and I'm a community guy. And my message is, we must make this better. And I come with solutions all the time. I spearhead a youth leadership conference. So one of the strategies that I think is very important is to involve the youth in our decisions. I was once the co-chairman of the Mayor's Commission on Youth that Mayor Price had. They stopped that, but that was a real good thing. I would like to see something like that happen again, where each high school is represented, along with the schools and the rest of the community. Community, well, first of all, we need community back in schools. We have to get community back in school. When I was raised, I'm fifty-nine. Fifty years ago, we had the family, the church, the community, and the school. There should be one. We have to find a way to get the community more in school, and it will solve the problem. Community is, I like to split the word into communication develops unification. Community, we need community, and AKA the village, got to speak to our neighbors. We got to get to know each other. We have to work together. The problems that we are having are the problems that nationally. It's because we're not unifying. We have to unify. We're in this thing together. We're in our communities. We have to come together. So our organizations, grassroots organizations, organizations that got the grants and stuff, I hope it's, if not, if it's not a calendar or somewhere we can go to see when they're doing their events, so we can support, help each other. We need that. And I have solutions for schools too, because I'm a retired teacher. I'm teaching GED now. And to conclude, we need the wisdom of the elders and the energy of the youth, and that's what we have right here. Let's get to work.
Thank you, sir. Pam Hall?
Good evening and Happy New Year to everyone. I'm Pam Hall, and I live in the Southeast community. As Americans, we seek government for the people, by the people. Moving Huntington Middle School from thirty-four oh one Orchid Avenue is against the wishes of Huntington alumni members, concerned citizens, and the Southeast community. The New Magnet School for the children of the Southeast community should be built on the sacred site. Huntington is a beacon of hope, pride, and legacy for the Southeast community. This legacy extends across the United States as alumni members have excelled in academics, the arts, medicine, politics, religion, and sports. A few standouts are Reverend's Rodney Hunter and Eric McCaskill, MIT professor James H. Williams, former college professor Dr. Carolyn Winstead Myers, the late Dr. Seawaldo Scott surgeon, the late Dr. Charles C. Smith pharmacist, Naomi Davis Earp, former chair of the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission, actor Frankie Facen, the late Earl Facen, professional football player, artist Jerome Johnson, and George Gary, Virginia delegate Jawan Jordan Ward, and singing groups The Five Keys and The Unifix. U.S. House Representative Hakeem Jeffries says, "In a democracy, we seek American values over autocracy and should put people over politics." What direction will you choose? Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Janie Basemore.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mr. May-
Good evening.
Mr. Mayor and members of council, I'd like to say Happy New Year, and I'd say welcome to the new leaders, and welcome to the old as well. My first piece of advice: Do not make decisions for a community of people based on your personal vision or personal likes or dislikes. For example, last year, a whole community of citizens were sadly disappointed when they lined up on a street only to find that the 30-plus-year Southeast Community Day Parade was not going to come down that street. Please review what took place by the previous council to disappoint an entire community based on personal feelings. If there can be no Southeast Community Day Parade, there should be no Juneteenth Parade, which is what occurred last year. Second, we are requesting a thorough investigation by the council into the improprieties that have occurred in the handling of the Southeast Community Resource Area Plan, which relocates Huntington Middle School to a more unsafe location at 28th and Orchid. These improprieties are too numerous to mention with a three-minute time limit, so we, the citizens of the Southeast community and other interested persons, request a meeting with you, Mr. Mayor, and the other council members to discuss these matters that are important to us. It is hoped that we will receive a response to this request. There is one other matter that I think should be considered, and that is recognition from our city should be made for Chief Steve Drew. This man has had to deal with unprecedented issues in our city, and we need to recognize, and this is something that I believe that Steve Drew deserves, and I request that we consider that as a proclamation for Steve Drew Day. We look forward to a great working relationship with you, and as I always say, and you will continue to hear until it does, Huntington Middle School shall rise again at 3401 Orchid Avenue, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bianca Wilson.
Welcome, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and everyone who's new here. I'm Bianca Wilson. My address is 799 Brookshire Terrace, and I live in Hampton. So what I would like to say, I have two brief questions and comments tonight. The first is in reference to the recent incident at Richnick Elementary School this past week. I pray for a full recovery to teacher Abby who was injured and all those who were affected. I want to thank all of the teachers, police, and administration for their hard work. Just with anything, we have more work to do. I graduated from Heritage High School in 1999. It was a huge transition from the old Ferguson High School back in 1995, as the school was closing. My mother, who still lives downtown and wanted me to go to technology school, since that was my passion since I was a child. Today, because of her and my wife, I have a master's degree in computer science, a business analyst, and I'm also a data scientist, and I'm also heavily involved in the community. I bring all this up to say this: Not one time when I was at Heritage did we feel threatened in any school. We did have metal detectors in the schools, and the morning we walked through the metal detectors, recently last year, I attended Heritage again at the bottom of the bands, and I walked through metal detectors then. As an Air Force veteran and abandoned on 11 in DC, I know how unexpected things happen and the long-term effect on individuals. I hope through your strategy, there's included counselors and community involvement more in the schools as well as metal detectors. My second thought that I have today is just to ask you guys if you have any strategies planned for the people who were kicked out, see if you lost apartments last year. I don't know if you guys have anything about that, but I know Marcia Price is heavily involved in Richmond, trying to fight for landlords and evictions in the Landlord Tending Act. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Brandon Woods.
How everybody doing? Excuse my time, my daughter had a track meet today. She going to state, by the way. She a freshman. I didn't come to talk about sports, though. We from Texas. I know y'all hearing in my voice. City council members, nice to meet y'all, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for your service, by the way, Marines. My wife, active-duty Navy. When we got stationed here, I told my wife I wasn't going to get involved in the community. A coach overheard me fussing at her and my son, and I have three at home, a 10-year-old, 13-year-old, and her. And he said, "Man, you want to coach football?" I forgot I said I wasn't going to get involved. I found myself coaching at the middle school. And then I said I wasn't going to get involved again, and then on my timeline, I kept seeing this police chief, bald-headed guy, I think it's Drew. He's everywhere. He's got coffee here, he got doughnuts here, he's all over, all over my timeline. I said I wasn't going, I said I wasn't going to get involved. And then I was condemned, because you can't really run from what God tell you to do. And I saw on the news a little boy do something that grown men, that's usually reserved for grown men. In Texas, I was juvenile probation. I worked in correction. My education is Sam Houston State, criminal justice. And in Texas, I was someone. So relocating to this area, no one knows me. Here, when they run a background check with all of that background I just gave you, all they see is what my daughter saw one day. A gang member attacked us, and I shot and killed him. And so when they run my background, everyone's eyes get big and they get nervous. I'm a CPS kid. I'm also a, at one time, orphan and bought-and-sold kid that married a beautiful woman 15 years, and we have three children. In Texas, I worked with juvenile probation, very violent offenders. I wasn't going to do that here. I was just going to sit back and try to get my daughter into a military academy or the military, or just get her out of our house. And so, but I can't do that. I can't sit in this community. My friend told me, "Don't move to Newport News." In fact, he said, "It's bad news." But I'm hard-headed. My doctor been telling me lose weight for years. I ain't listened to him yet. And so when I drove up to bad news, all I saw was good news. I don't, I don't have all the answers, but what I do know is that I'm here to help. Please reach out to me. I've worked with violent juvenile offenders and fought against gangs, and I'd like my daughter to be able to enjoy herself in Newport News, minus Dayton, of course, but, you know, she can do that when she's out of the house. So I think I saw Chief Drew back there. Mayor, my services are here to help, and I'd hate for me not to get a chance to help because of what I did, but it doesn't dictate who I am. So I'm not here with a solution right now, but I am here to offer myself and my services. Thank you all.
Thank you. Mr. Ernest Thompson.
Good afternoon. My name is Ernest Thompson, 645 19th Street, Newport News. I am excited. Congratulations. My eyes are dancing. I know my parents would love to see what I see. There are possibilities, and I'm excited for you all. I know change has come, because I see Councilman Harris is over here, and Dr. Woodbury, things is switching around here. You know, this is wonderful. Mayor, the whole community, there's excitement just flowing through the community. They just, everybody's saying, "Man, there's change. Something's good about to happen." And so as a citizen, as somebody that's involved in a lot of the things that happen in our community, I too offer my services in any way I can to assist you all, and I just pray that you all have good success and prosper in the things that benefits this great city, especially where I grew up at, this downtown Newport News area. There's a lot missing down here. There's some things that are happening to change, but we need, we need a lot of help and involvement on our part, being listened to. So again, I just said, "Thank you." I'm happy, but I have to say, real quickly, tonight I heard something, I was sitting back there, and I heard 1804 Ivy Avenue. I own that property. I don't know what you guys are talking about. So I guess I have talked to the city manager. I guess if y'all do something with people's property, you inform them or send a piece of paper or something. So I'll reach out to you, Ms. Robinson, try to figure out what's going on. Again, I just want to say congratulations. Thank you guys so much, and I do wish and pray the very best for you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, can I just say something before Mr. Ernesti? I'm so glad you talked about volunteering and doing some things in the community, because I did volunteer you today for somebody who called me about a podcast, for someone to tell the history of Newport News. So you, I did volunteer you for that, and they will be calling you.
Okay. I'm on it.
The next up is Mr. James Lovett.
Good evening, and Happy New Years to the mayor and the members of the City Council. My name is James Lovett. Some say Lovett, but I say Lovett, because when you look at L-O, it's low and then vet like Corvette. But it's pronounced Lovett all my life, but now I'm changing it to Lovett, Lovett. I reside on Riverlands Drive in Newport News. The relocation of Huntington Middle School remains an important issue with the citizens of the Southeast community. We believe that the 28th St. and Orchid Avenue location is not as safe for our students as the current location. There are far more vehicular traffic and also more public walking traffic in the area. We remain concerned about the way that this plan has been handled and encourage this new administration to look into the procedures implemented and omitted by the previous council in approving the plan. We allege that our community was not properly informed and never given an opportunity to express their views on the final plan before the previous mayor declared the plan a done deal. At that time, the previous council and the school board had not even voted on the plan. The citizens of the Southeast community have continuously been ignored and disrespected when it comes to projects in our community. We are asking this council to take time to completely review and investigate how this plan has been implemented. It is our hope that this administration will reverse the mayor's decision on relocating Huntington Middle School, which he himself decided was the best for the citizens. Thank you for your time. Huntington shall rise again at 3401 Orchid Avenue. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last comment is from Ms. Lily Robinson.
How you doing?
Doing well.
All right. Happy New Years first. Welcome, Mayor. Welcome, welcome, welcome. My daughter met you, my granddaughter met you. Okay. I'm here, and I'm liking what it look like the man said, but I'm loving them too right there with the wisdom, and I'm looking for them too to get y'all on board with what Newport News want. I come here today with a heavy, heavy heart as a mother, a grandmother, and a great-grandmother of this great city of Newport News, Virginia, where I was raised at. What happened about that six-year-old boy is a shame. Newport News have let us down so many years. You let our children there, then our grandchildren, now the grandbabies. I'm asking y'all, I'm begging y'all, please, please, you got to do something. This is not right. I could run what's wrong and stuff. I'm still going through things where I be going to try to get help from mental health and the school system, everything. Newport News ain't never had it. Newport News and City Council ain't never helped us. Newport News housing and stuff, and they take, take, take. But I'm calming down. I'm just asking y'all, because y'all look good to me. Y'all look good to me. And Ms. Vick, you know, because I talked to you about the deal I had with Newport News, Rita Bellhausen, and I'm not finished with them yet. And Ms. Lady, I talked to you last year with the empathy I seen you about our parade, just like they said. Y'all cannot pick and judge for us. Y'all supposed to come here and help and get us what we want in our neighborhood. And why you keep messing with Huntington? I know when I took my nephew to there, I couldn't believe it. I went to Huntington, I didn't graduate, but that's all right, I went. And I took my nephew to there, man, it was horrible to see what happened. We used to have everything. We ain't had to go with tail for nothing unless you worked in the shipyard. Y'all took all these 40 years and built up dentures when it used to be wood, and you never stopped building up on Washington Avenue. But please, please, could y'all do this for us? Could y'all please help us for our children's sake? I'm coming out here in the dark, riding across the bridge and everything. They did fix that light that time. Then the guys were talking about lights for the children in the field. Help our babies. This is a six-year-old boy. Help their parents. My prayers go out to that schoolteacher, but that school did not give service and stuff for what these children need, and only that that six-year-old child did that. I don't know the gist of it, but I know how I would feel as a mother and a grandma and a great-grandma and stuff. So y'all help them. Give that family help, pray for them. Get that teacher help, and get that teacher help in school so she can see something when a six-year-old child can bring a gun to school. And get their daddy and stuff, that y'all, and let all these guns come in there. Get them out the street. Get the ones that shooting people. My nephew, two weeks after Christmas, got shot walking from Food Line for no reason. But anyway, I appreciate y'all listening to me. I would be back over here to check on y'all again. And listen, don't forget now, Cox owned Newport News. They charge us high prices and stuff. They are looking at y'all on TV, but they are calling me. They are sure to call me. And thank y'all, and bless each and everyone, and we pray for that family, both of them, and get that baby some help. And Chief Drew, I agree with y'all about him. He's good.
Ma'am, ma'am, can you stay right there, ma'am?
Hold on, Ms. Lily. Ms. Lily.
Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Lily, come back.
We need you back. No worries.
I used to get cut off by them.
No, no, I'm not gonna.
Yeah. It was 12 years ago.
I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna cut you off. I just.
I would usually turn about.
No worries.
And that's why y'all let me get in every.
Yes, ma'am.
I said, "Lord, they gonna cut me off."
No, we're not.
But I called the office and told them to tell y'all I was coming.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure y'all was gonna be here tonight.
We gonna be here.
Great, congratulations. I know your family proud of you, because we are.
Thank you.
And with these two ladies.
Can I please ask you a question?
Yes.
Because you talked about having no light at the HRT.
They fixed it. Don't worry about the other lights and stuff that's.
Well, I'm working on them, but I gotta make sure your light was fixed first, and it was fixed.
Oh, yeah, they called me, oh, right away. I had no problem.
Great, thank you. That's what I wanted to know.
Thank you, ma'am. That's the, uh, that's all the cards that I have at this time. Our next item is going to be new business. Uh, Madam Manager?
Nothing, sir.
City Attorney? Madam Clerk?
I just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year. Welcome the newly elected mayor and council members and offer the city clerk's office assistance any way we can help.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
Just want to say thank you all for coming out. Um, the comment was already made that a lot of folks feel this is a great opportunity for our city, uh, but it's not just on us, it's on the entire city and everyone in it, uh, if we're ever going to bring, uh, forth some positive changes to the city. Uh, so I just want to say, "I'm here for you. Please feel free to reach out." Uh, and I look forward to this new year and, and what it has in store for all of us. Um, another thing I want to mention is that the teacher, uh, has a GoFundMe right now, so if you find it in your heart, uh, to donate, please do so. And that is all that I have, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Ely?
I just like to thank everybody for coming out here today and I'd like to thank God again for giving me the opportunity to serve Newport News for another four years. I did six years on the school board and I must say that was one of the most best times of my life. So I'd like to thank the community once again for giving me the amazing opportunity to serve you in a different capacity for another four years. I also would like to, um, thank the first responders, the police department, the sheriff department, everyone, the teachers, everyone, the staff, everyone that was involved with the tragedy we had at Rich Neck Elementary School. My prayers go out to Abby and her family and the entire Rich Neck family and all of our teachers of Newport News. We've been in close relationship with the school board and having conversations as well as with the police department to make sure incidences like this don't happen again. So my prayers go out to the family and we will get through this as Newport News strong. I also would like to thank all the guests that came out to speak today. We definitely hear your concerns and as a council, we would definitely take your concerns into consideration and do all we could do to make sure we listen to your voices. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilman Harris?
Yes, and good evening to everyone who was in attendance on our first council meeting for the new year. And once again, congratulations to all of our newly sworn in officially sworn-in council members and, uh, mayor. And just to echo off of what council member Ely stated in regards to our staff and students at Rich Neck, we continue to lift them up and the families of all those that have been impacted by the, the incident that we, um, that had happened on this past Friday. But not only do we need to lift them up, we need to lift up all of our educators, all of our young people throughout the course of the city, because even though it happened at that one school, it has impacted every school, not just here in Newport News, uh, but throughout the region and from what I'm seeing across the nation, uh, for some of the people who have been calling and inquiring about different information and reports. So let's just continue to do that together as, uh, as has been stated, we will get through it as a lot is going on, on that end. And then I want to also add that we are starting our collection for our second semester re-up school supply drive. Um, we have a date set, but I don't want to give it out just yet because we're trying to finalize one more thing, um, but it will take place at the end of the first semester. The end of the first semester usually ends, well, will end the last week in January. So prior to, um, them starting the second semester or that following weekend, we're gonna have our distribution event. And, uh, right now, as we work toward that, we're taking donations at, um, the Denby Community Center. We'll have a box at the Denby Community Center for anyone who would like to drop off items. And we also have a location at Vertex Athletic Performance, which is a building next door to, if you're familiar with the Wawa in the Denby Beachmont area, is a building right there called Vertex Athletic Performance, right next to New Beach Grove, adjacent to New Beach Grove. And we'll be taking donations there. And we have a couple churches that will be having some, uh, of our donation boxes as well. We're taking pencils, we're taking crowns, scissors, glue sticks, book bags, uh, heads, headphones or earbuds that the kids utilize throughout for, uh, some of their learning needs. So any and anything, any and everything that you can provide, we would accept because this goes towards helping our students for the second semester of the school year. As they get a lot of stuff for the beginning of the school year, but as you know, during the course of the year, pencils get a little dull, crowns break. We want them to finish the school year strong and it's been, this will be our sixth year doing this event. But we're doing a little bit different also and just to help some of our young people that are dealing with some of the tra, the traumatic situation, uh, we're gonna have some counseling and therapeutic resources on site for families to come and get information if that's something that they would be interested in, just to help, um, bring some, some sense of, of calm and, and a resource that can help as they're trying to process what has just happened, uh, recently. So that will be, uh, coming real soon, uh, but until then, we're still, we're gonna be accepting donations and, uh, if you have any questions, feel free to reach out, email me, call, and, uh, I will share that information with you. And that's all I have, Mayor Jones.
Thank you. Councilman Long?
Again, I want to thank everyone, uh, for participating early at the inaugural swearing-in. Also thank everyone that came out tonight, uh, asked that you continue to engage in us. I like hearing the comments. Uh, one thing, when I was out campaigning, I really enjoyed people, uh, from all different views, viewpoints and perspectives, uh, telling me what they wanted to see in the, in the community. So coming out to city council really helps out, hearing the input. Uh, please reach out to me anytime. Um, I ran, ran this race so that way I could give back to the community that I so love and been here my entire life. Uh, so keep on showing up to council, uh, meetings and, uh, reaching out to us and, uh, look forward to a productive year of what's working together as council, working together, making sure we're actually serving the citizens here in Newport News and making, making this city a great city. Uh, I know it, I know in my heart, we have a lot of great people in our community and we want to see good and we can all work together and doing that some together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Vick?
Um, yes, well, just like so many of you and thank you all for coming out, so many of you, I'm excited about working with our new council as well. Uh, congratulations to our new mayor, Mayor Philip Jones, and, uh, Councilman Long, Councilman Ely, as well as, uh, Councilman Bethany. And to, and to be able to have a seasoned council with the, with the, with us three who have already been here. And so, um, coming into this new year, I want to wish everybody a Happy New Year and I hope that, just like the gentleman said, um, because I am too praying for healing and, and praying for strength and, and praying for togetherness and love for our community as we move forward. And I particularly like the gentleman who I didn't get your name, but to come forward, you know, so many times in life, it's easy for people to point blame, but to be able to come forward tonight with your offering of your service to the community to make our youth lives better. And so many times, people, I don't, I don't know about your other part of your background, but I do know you said about the piece that you felt was troubled, but so many times, people think that in healing or help for somebody else, that they need somebody with, with a master's degree or a doctorate, but people need everyday people to share their experiences so that their life, lives can be enlightened. So I really thank you for that message and it was very encouraging to hear. And I'm looking forward to the great things that you will do because as you combat it, the person who said something about bad news, I know that you'll be able to combat the spirits of the negativity that can hinder our city. So I welcome this new year, this new, uh, body of people to, that I'll be working with. And, and I believe that's my classmate from Ferguson High School, Derek Anthony, our superstar basketball player. Can you please stand, Derek? He is here. He came out to support me. I really appreciate it. Derek Anthony from Ferguson, our superstar basketball player. Thank you for that and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, uh, I understand that one speaker wanted to speak but didn't get to sign up and I, as a teacher, love to speak and I'm not gonna deny anybody the chance to speak and I know our new mayor won't either. I would like to make a motion that we allow him to speak.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
All right. Can Pastor Anthony Brown?
We didn't need a vote to do that, right? No. No.
Thank you all for allowing me to come up to speak. I flew in from Buffalo, New York. My daughter came to Buckingham as a nurse practitioner here. If you give me your address and you can go first.
Uh, yes, my address is 670 Downey Green Street, Hampton. And, uh, dropping everything, I apologize. Um, I was a resident of Newport News and have worked in Newport News for the last three years, uh, for addiction clinic. Um, I have served, uh, hundreds of people in the area and my father, who is from Buffalo, uh, works with, um, a lot of people of my kind of who I work with now. Um, and it saddens me that most of the people that I work with, um, they have no resources. Um, you know, a lot of them come to us, you know, for their addiction, but they're homeless. Um, they're hungry. Um, their, their children are living homeless with them, um, and they just have no resources to start over. And it saddens me that there is so little. Um, the care coordinators were giving my patients list of numbers that don't even work anymore. Um, so we're here to, uh, try to get those services started for the people who need them because they really, really do need them in the community.
Yes, and I'm Pastor Anthony Brown again from Buffalo, New York. And I ran a plethora of programs throughout Buffalo, Florida, and even we have some international things and some paperwork that you will be seeing. Uh, I was a gang banger. I had a life sentence in prison and thanks be to God that he turned that around in my third year and I was released. We thank God for that. He put me into ministry and therefore I became an advocate for my community. The same place that I destroyed, I went back and rebuilt with the help of a lot of other people. It was not just me, it was multiple people. As you see, uh, the information has been, uh, passed out to you all. You'll see information from judges, from mayor, from the mayor of City of Buffalo. You'll see something from the senator. They will, uh, co-sign what I'm saying to you all is true. We took a neighborhood called the GYC area, throughout the Goodyear Crew, and it was on television. It was actually one of the strongest places Donald Slade dreamed. And, uh, we took that neighborhood and individuals are now living in peace in one of the nearest neighborhoods in the city. And I've heard about Newport News and we want to label cities the way they be because of a particular neighborhood, but we're not bad people, we're just people that need help. And so we're here to help in Newport News, just like we helped in the city of Deland, Florida, where they had no running water. The streets were still, uh, dirt roads. They, when we left, they had running water and the streets was paved and the gang violence had reduced. We looking here, coming here to try to help you all to eradicate this problem. I was so impressed with this brother and if I can solicit your help, I will. And he's a person that we're looking to. We want to turn this thing from a negative to a positive. One time in, um, in, uh, we had sent a group of people to Iran. It was one of the most rundown prisons in the place. We put this Way to Happiness program in there and there were 10,000 people that took this course, a thousand of them that remained to the end. Can you tell me how many you think when they was released, how many recidivists there was? There was two out of 1,000 people. The officers even be turned their lives around and became interactive with the, uh, inmates and it became a place of not, not, not fun, but a place that they can reside in without the violence. This program works. We've worked it all throughout the country and you can call any one of those people in the paper, they will say that. Congratulations, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to all of you newcomers and those that have been on our council all the time. I thank you from the depths of my soul for allowing me to come up here for these few short moments to share with you that what we want to share back with you for real and that's to turn Newport News into good news.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm gonna close the public hearing again and then go to Councilman Woodbury.
Thank you so much and thank you all for coming down. And I want to make sure that everybody who told me tonight and told us tonight that they had something to offer. I want every one of you to get an assignment, so your names will be on a list for me and for all of us to call on you because you are what counts. You are community and you're our bosses and we thank you for the privilege of serving you. I thank you so much for coming down and speaking and some of the speakers used to come every time and I, Pat, I remember you and the Crable always came down. So continue, continue, continue to be involved in this community because that's the way we'll become better. Thank you again.
As the, the last speaker, I just want to echo all of my, um, fellow council members' comments on, on Rich Neck and the heroism of the teacher, um, the proficiency of the teachers, of, of the staff, um, our police force, police chief, firefighters, all the first responders. I want to echo that and just say how grateful I am for their, their speedy, uh, action on the scene. I'll keep my comments concise and succinct, but if you look at our council, it's an amazing mixture. Uh, people are sitting in different seats and I think someone made a point that it's the, the fire of youth balanced by wisdom and hopefully you can see by the people that are next to me how we have the wisdom and we have the, and we have the fire. Um, that's how we're going to sort of govern is we're not always gonna agree on every, on everything, but we are gonna be unified, um, whether it's the south, uptown, central, et cetera. So thank you so much for coming out to the first meeting of city council. If it's not for the business, we stand adjourned.